Now in session, please stand for a moment of silence and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Jesus.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Clanton.
President.
Mrs. Doyle.
Here.
Mrs. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Page.
Here.
Mr. Smigel.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Dr. Alexander.
Here. The motion is suspended with the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting. I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Dr. Alexander.
Here.
The motion is suspended with the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
I have a resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye. Dr. Burt Song, it's been a pleasure to work with you over the years. I served on the school board for five years and now on city council. You have been the utmost professional. You've been a dear friend and I really wish you the very best, but I also want to thank you all that you've done for our city over the many years. I vote aye, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Mrs. Johnson.
Dr. Sharon Bert Song. As an educator for Norfolk Public Schools, first as a teacher and then as an instructional specialist, which I love my job, and you and I have been knowing each other for, as they say, a mini blue moon.
Yes.
And I want to say thank you for your many years of service to the community, to the parents, and most importantly, to our scholars. And I wish you much success in whatever the decision may be on your next journey, that God will help you plan.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Dr. Bert Song, thank you very much for your service to the city and we wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Mr. Page.
Dr. Bert Song.
Mr. Page.
Yeah, an incredible human being. How did we get to this place here? When it started off, when I was running, I remember I came down to a school board meeting and I said something and I tell you, Dr. Bert Song caught me one day, pulled me to the side and I said, "This is a tough lady right here."
We've been on the same page since and everything that we have going on right now, I want to
inspire you regardless of what's not no more, to not stop the fight and to be willing to fight anyone, any organization, anybody that's in the way of the success of our children.
Yes.
Let that be the message. Thank you for all that it is that you've done and all that it is that you've looked at.
Thank you.
My vote is aye.
Thank you. Mr. Smigel.
Yes, first, I'd like to recognize some school board members that are in the audience. I see a school board member, Dell Martin, Dr. Dell Martin, Mr. Ken Paulson, Colonel Paulson, vice chair, Alfreda Thomas, and then also former school board members. I see Noel Gabriel, Dr. Noel Gabriel's there, and Michelle Stone. Thank you all for also coming out and supporting. I said Michelle, I know, yes. And Dr. Sharon I Bert Song. I just wanted to say, if I could sit here and read all of the comments that have been on social media about the impact that you have made on so many people's lives in the school system and the community, we would be here probably for a couple of days. I've also, I'm the longest-serving council member here and through all of the superintendents that Norfolk Public Schools has had, I don't ever recall a city council inviting a superintendent and being recognized with a resolution. What that says is, and most people in here don't know, but unfortunately, the superintendent's position is political. It's a political job as well and part of that is also maintaining very positive relationships with the elected officials that fund the school system and that is why the eight of us here agreed to do that resolution because you have been a tremendous partner with the city of Norfolk in making sure that we're moving our school system in the right direction. When I first got on city council, we only funded the school system about $101 million. With the efforts that you made, the funding formula was enacted and I think this year it was $171 million that the school system received from us because of that partnership, but that's because we had the faith in the leader of that organization in moving our school system forward. So, thank you so much for all of your years of service to our students and our families and for being just an excellent partner with the city of Norfolk. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Clanton.
Ditto to everything else that's been said. It's been an absolute pleasure working with you and there are so many students and members of our Norfolk community who have benefited because of your leadership that we could fill this room 100 times over if we could, so thank you very much and good luck to you in the future.
Thank you.
Dr. Alexander.
Well, I vote aye and Dr. Bert Song, you have just made a tremendous impact, not only on our children, but our city. The strategic partnerships that you formed with businesses and industry will continue to pay dividends for many years to come. So, as Carlos said about the old Negro spiritual, I'll just make it plain, to God be the glory.
Yes, yes.
For it.
Thank you.
Any comments that you may wish to make?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Alexander, Vice Mayor Thomas, members of the city council, city manager Roberts, special guests, and members of this wonderful community. Words simply cannot begin to convey how much this honor means to me. Thank you for your belief in me and your support of me throughout my 26-year tenure with Norfolk Public Schools. I have felt your unwavering support, both personally and professionally. I feel blessed to have greatly benefited from the wise counsel of our illustrious mayor, Dr. Kenneth Cooper Alexander, and from the thoughtful and strategic advisement of city manager Pat Roberts. I have treasured the encouragement that so many council members have offered to me in the best of times and in the worst of times. Councilman Smigel will always have a special place in my heart for his unyielding support of me as superintendent of schools, but most importantly, for his exceptional commitment to Norfolk Public Schools and our babies at Grabby High School. Thank you so much, Tommy. I would certainly be remiss if I did not recognize those school board members, both past and present, who fought the good fight alongside me to ensure that decisions are made in the best interest of children. Thank you, Dr. Noel Gabriel, councilman Carlos Clanton, Dr. Adele Martin, and Lauren Campson for affording me the opportunity to serve the brilliant children of Norfolk Public Schools as their superintendent. A special thank you to school board members Colonel Ken Paulson and Alfreda Thomas for having an open mind as you approached your work alongside me as members of the MPS governance team who consistently put children first. I have felt the exceptional power of supportive prayers of Norfolk Public Schools' teachers, building principals, central office administrators, and staff and community stakeholders. To you, I say, thank you. Thank you for your undying commitment to Norfolk Public Schools and all that you've done to uplift our children. During my tenure as superintendent of schools, we in Norfolk Public Schools, we had a mantra, a mantra that defined our approach to the work we did on behalf of our children. Those three words were, "No matter what." Those three words were. No matter what. What was that, baby? No matter what, no matter what. That's right. Simply stated, no matter what challenges we face, the expectation was that we would rise above all of them and do whatever it took to move children to success and well-being. The city of Norfolk government is and will always be Norfolk Public Schools' faithful, no matter what partner, and I will forever be grateful for that profound commitment. And finally, my faith compels me to leave you with this. For I know the plans I have for you. Plans to prosper you and not to harm you. Plans to give you hope and a future. I know your deeds. I have placed before you an open door that no man can shut. Do not dwell on the past. He works out everything, everything to its proper end, and that end is before me at this time and I will trust in him to guide the next steps of my life's journey. So, once again, thank you for this wonderful recognition. I will treasure it always. May God continue to bless the great city of Norfolk and those who serve its precious children. Thank you.
Dr. Bert Song, will you please join us up here?
Look great, okay. Three, one, two, three. One, two, three. It's perfect, thank you.
We have the school board members to join us, past and present.
Ken can't hear.
Yeah, come on up.
Colonel Paulson.
Michelle. Sit down, all right. On three, one, two, three. One, two, three. It's perfect, thank you.
We have the school board members to join us, past and present.
Ken can't hear.
Yeah. Colonel Paulson.
Michelle. Sit down, all right. On three, one, two, three.
Council will stay at ease so you can greet Dr. Bert Song.
Yes, city council rules permit each speaker, three minutes in total, to speak on any and/or all consent and docket items at each monthly meeting. If in advance of tonight's meeting you register with the clerk to comment on a public hearing matter, you will also have three additional minutes to speak.
Mr. Pace, will you close the doors? Mr. Pace, close the doors, please, thank you.
As you approach the council, you'll notice a timer on the lectern. At the beginning of your three minutes, you'll see a green light which will activate. Two and a half minutes into your remarks, you'll notice a yellow light indicating that you have 30 seconds to finish your comments. At the end of your three minutes, you'll see a red light in here beep. We ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on docket matters, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a profane, disruptive, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience. Comments on an agenda item should be remain to that item. A speaker who fails to comply with the basic rules of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. And as a reminder, no signed placard, poster, or light material which may be carried by hand shall be permitted in the city council chamber or adjoining areas.
To, all right, those who sign up to speak, if you wish to speak, Tony Arenta, would you like to speak? And followed by James McLean.
How's it going? Thank you all for having me. I'm here to speak on R3, the short-term rental property for 35th Street there. I'm actually not speaking on behalf of that one. I live next to one of Mr. Moisler Cortez's other property on 37th and Newport and so I'm here, I've been here for, I've been in the, my wife and I have been in the home for about a year and I'm just here to comment that we have not had any issues with the property. The guests have been great. It's one of those things where we weren't quite sure moving in, but it has been great. All the guests, for the most part, are ODU families either here for an ODU event or visiting an ODU student or some people on vacation, but for the most part, we haven't had any issues the entire year. Everyone's been very friendly, very great, no noise, nothing. We're in the backyard a lot, no one's there. And then on top of that, Abel doesn't actually live in the house, obviously, because it's a rental property, but we, he is a part of the community. He checks by a lot. We've gotten to know him and formed a relationship with him. He's not someone that is from New York, owns a property, and is just renting. He is in here in the community and so we see him a good amount. Those are kind of all the comments that I have. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Does Danielle wish as a speaker?
She didn't.
Okay, all right. James, James McLean, followed by Vale Black.
James McLean, I live in Toller Place in Norfolk, Willoughby Spit. I've spoken with you all before, about 810 West Ocean View Avenue. We're here again, we've been here before. The Civic League has voted again. We voted against it, 38 to 17. This property is just, there's too much on this property, there's not enough parking. Even though it meets the letter of the law, there's just not room. If any of you all had a chance to ride by there, there are 12 units and after the 12 units were done back in the 50s and another duplex was put there, which really overcrowded it, now they want to bring in short-term rental. I think we're just asking too much for a piece of property there and I don't think it's appropriate. We've gotten enough in a three-block area. 7% of Norfolk short-term rentals are within the three-block area of this property. There are 14 units already available right in that three-block area, so we just, I don't think it's appropriate and I hope you guys will understand and look at it that way, too. In addition, the property owner has, he has multiple code violation cases that have come up when you go through Norfolk air since he's owned the property and there's been a dumpster in violation there since 2021 when he got the property. We've written letters about it, we've tried to get something done. Nothing was done until about two weeks ago and we just don't know that this is appropriate or the owner would really be paying attention to what we care about in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Vale Black.
Good evening. I'm Vale Black, 1114 Toller Place, also in opposition to 810 West Ocean View Avenue. I'd just like to point out, we do have a couple of other Civic League members present in opposition. If they could just raise their hands so y'all can see them. This property has had a lot of discussion about it over a number of months. Three minutes is not a lot of time, so I'm just going to go a different route. I'd like to pose a question. How does everybody feel about Civic Leagues? Do you think they're useful to the community? I think they are. The Willoughby Civic League is very active. We meet every month except for July and August in the summers to discuss matters that affect the appeal and livability of Willoughby homeowners and residents. Among other things, the Civic League supports you, our civic leaders, by giving you a platform to address your constituents in person regarding matters for which you need support. We raise funds for veterans, for schoolchildren in our community, and other various causes. The Civic League also votes on matters which can move our community down one path or down another. Short-term rentals and conditional use permits have been a hot topic for us for over the past few years. If you look at our history, though, you'll see that the Civic League has approved more STRs than they have voted down. This application has had two opportunities to present to the Civic League members. A presentation was given, there was ample time for questions and answers, and regarding this matter, both presentations were voted down by our Civic League members, including the most recent on June 12th by 37, I think Ron said 38, I'm not sure, it's 37 or 38 to 17, more than a 2/3 margin. Some of you have been to our Civic League meetings. You know that we thoroughly discuss topics that go before a vote. The Willoughby Civic League does not support this application. On behalf of our members, I'm asking you to support the Willoughby Civic League in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Sterling.
Hello, council members. My name's Kevin Sterling. I'm at 260 East 25th Street, Long Beach, California. I'm here to talk about 810 West Ocean View. Interesting feedback from the Civic League members and I do appreciate their, you know, their involvement and concerns, but I would ask the council members to please consider the information that is factual and presented with reasoned, objective opinions. The gentleman just before the lady that spoke mentioned there's, I think, 7% of short-term rentals in a three-block radius. That is untrue. If you look at the planning commissions or the planning department's data, that demonstrates the short-term rental concentration is actually less than 2% across the entire Willoughby Spit area and within my area, it's also around 1 and 1/2%. So, I think the opposition by the Civic League, which started at the initial request for this short-term rental, has STRs than they have voted down. This application has had two opportunities to present to the Civic League members. A presentation was given, there was ample time for questions and answers, and regarding this matter, both presentations were voted down by our Civic League members, including the most recent on June 12th, by 37, Ron said 38, I'm not sure, it's 37 or 38 to 17, more than a 2/3rd margin. Some of you have been to our Civic League meetings. You know that we thoroughly discuss topics that go before a vote. The Willoughby Civic League does not support this application. On behalf of our members, I'm asking you to support the Willoughby Civic League in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Sterling?
Hello, council members. My name's Kevin Sterling, I'm at 260 East 25th Street, Long Beach, California. I'm here to talk about 810 West Ocean View. There's an interesting feedback from the Civic League members, and I do appreciate their, you know, their involvement and concerns, but I would ask the council members to please consider the information that is factual and presented with reasoned, objective opinions. The gentleman just before the lady that spoke mentioned there's, I think, 7% of short-term rentals in a three-block radius. That is untrue. If you look at the planning commissions or the planning department's data, that demonstrates the short-term rental concentration is actually less than 2% across the entire Willoughby Spit area, and within my area, it's also around 1 and 1/2%. So, I think the opposition by the Civic League, which started at the initial request for this short-term rental, has perpetuated quite a bit of misinformation about the property. The parking concerns, they really are not there. I haven't had any issues with parking since I've owned the property for about three and a half years. There's adequate parking, I've never had anyone have an issue with, you know, park, available parking. The issues with turnaround, I've demonstrated through videos, through simulations, that there's a safe turnaround at both ends of the parking, the parking lot. And yes, I did meet with the Civic League on 12th, but I would say that that meeting was prejudiced with quite a bit of misinformation by the Willoughby Spit newsletter, which I believe some of the council members have seen, and it basically was disseminated to the members saying, hey, 810's coming up for a conditional use permit, we need to come out and, you know, oppose this, it's a very dangerous situation, your life may be at risk, and that was disseminated, rather than the simulations, the modifications that I've done to address their concerns. It's hard to try and follow the letter of the law and ask for the council members' vote when I'm facing significant opposition from the Civic League that is based on non-factual data, misinformation, and opinionated hearsay. So, in that regard, I ask the council members to please consider the factual data that's been presented, the simulations, and vote with reason and consideration of objective data. Thank you.
If you wish, sir.
Just, I just want to ask one question for clarity for me for this particular item. For, you're talking about 810, right?
Yes, sir.
Have you, within the last 30 to 60 days, has this been operated as a short-term rental?
No, it has not. None of the units have operated as short-term rentals. I have my management, the director of my management company here to speak as well, and she'll speak on that topic, but none of the units, the 12 apartment units in front of the two units that I'm asking for short-term rentals, those have not been operated as short-term rentals, and the house building has been down since October of '23, and it has not operated since.
So there's been no one there, then, right?
No, there has no, been no one there overnight. I would speak to an event that occurred if you'd like, because there was something that happened back on May 30th. One of my contractors who's been with me for, throughout this process, which should have been about a six to eight-month renovation, has now turned into about 15 months with significant mal behavior by other contractors, and he's been there for me. He asked me, could he host a graduation event for his daughter that was coming up? And I said, well, yeah, sure, that's not a problem. I'm not ready to operate, but you can come and, you know, spend time on the back deck, use the bathroom inside the units, et cetera. But as that had been approached, I was like, wait a minute, this may not be a good look for what I'm trying to do, and I was concerned that it could reflect badly on me. I was like, but it was about a week before the event, I was like, I can't put this guy out. He's been there for me like hardly any others, you know, and I, in good conscience, couldn't say no, so I, he, the event happened, there was about 20 or so adults, about 10 children, from about six to nine, you know, on the back deck mostly, somewhere on the front deck the kids playing. We brought the event inside the house at nine, and everyone was gone by 10. The next morning, I went to all the neighbors, or the neighbors that I could reach out to and said, hey, you know, I know this event, I want to know, if it got out of hand for you, I absolutely apologize. And before I could even, you know, get halfway through what I was saying, I said, look, it was nothing. It was an event on a Saturday, it was shut down, you know, well within the hours, it was a non-issue. And I spoke to about five or six neighbors. I also got, you know, the manager of the next door property, who I asked, hey, did anyone call with concerns? He said, no, I didn't hear from anyone, I knew anything about this. So that was a non-paid event, no one stayed overnight, it was just a graduation celebration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mayor Stevenson?
Good evening. My name is Barry McKissick.
I'm Mo Tia Stevenson.
And we're here about 1872 East Little Creek Road. Really just wanted to introduce myself and my son, and the name of the restaurant is My Mama's Kitchen. And just wanted to say what an honor it is for us to be able to open in that location, because for 22 years, I had my childcare center there, years to remember. So it's like an honor and a God-sent that we're able to stay in that same building where I have loved and educated so many children after 50 years of teaching. So I just kind of wanted to say, everything will be wonderful, we will, we're definitely community people, we live in Norfolk, so we will embrace the people who are in our community by all means while we're there with the restaurant, the same way we did with the daycare. My son also ran the restaurant, My Mama's Kitchen on Shore Drive. Talk about that a little bit.
Well, yeah. I think a couple of them have been there. But, yeah, we're just, you know, moving to a bigger location, you know, seeing we kind of outgrew the other location, but we're just hoping to open the same kind of restaurant here, although it might be bigger, we still are going to adhere to our, you know, family, family environment. And even though we, you know, we hope to have alcohol, we definitely plan on keeping it very safe. And when we had our beer and wine license at the other location, we didn't have any problems or anything whatsoever, so this one, we'll make sure we have our designated driver program and everything in place for, you know, to make sure things, you know, stay
Yes.
grounded.
And at 78 years old, I'm not for no shenanigans and no messing around, so it's, this is a serious business, and this is community, and it means a lot to us. Thank you.
Mr. Ray, we're really excited about you guys finally opening. I had the pleasure of taking a tour of their new establishment, you guys will be very impressed with it. Mo and his mama have put a lot of money into that building, they don't actually own the building, but they put over $400,000, I think you guys said, into that restaurant.
In three years.
And one of the issues that they are having, which I have not had a lot of success, and Mr. Mayor, you and I have spoken about this, is the property manager is limiting them to alcohol hours of 9:00, 9:00 PM. And most of that is because of the establishment that's located next door and the problems that we're having next door, which we're working on those issues. I had requested that, so that they don't have to go back through the application process, and I don't, is Bobby here?
Bobby, sure.
Yeah, Bobby, about amending this to make sure that this could go through the full hours with understanding that they would still need approval from the property manager to sell past 9:00, but that way they did not have to go back through the whole process again of adjusting the hours, because they've been, you guys are on two, almost two years now, right?
Three.
Three years. I just don't want to have them see, then go through and spend the money again and go through that, so I don't know if that's in here, I'm trying to read it, but I didn't see it.
What is the, is it 9 o'clock? Is it 9 o'clock, man, Bobby?
It is limited to, we did, during the planning commission public hearing, they did expand their hours. However, the applicant did not request the later ones on Friday and Saturday, because I think there was concern with their landlord. But for right now, the, their hours of operation are supposed to be 11:00 AM until 10:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM till 11:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, and 11:00 AM until 5:00 PM on Sunday. So that is at the request of the applicant, that we changed it during the planning commission hearing.
Okay.
We're not, we're taking everything into consideration, you know, it's a, it's a lovely restaurant, it's very classy, and it's something where everyone can come to visit and eat and be happy, but we also need to be able to sell a drink while people are eating, or we won't be able to pay the rent.
Amendment that Mr. Smigel is offering, that you can sell alcohol concurrent with the hours of your operation.
Okay.
And the only thing that will limit you would be some contractual...
Until that's worked out.
Okay, we're working on that.
So, Mr. Bull and Mr. Pishka, will you note the amendment?
I will, I've got it. I'm sorry, I didn't follow which item this is.
C6. C6.
C6.
C6, I'll make that amendment.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bobby, are you okay with that? Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Barrett? Barrett Hicks? No, Barrett, Barrett Hicks. Sorry. It's kind of close.
Barry.
Barrett?
Yes, I love a restaurant like that, I got to get there. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Barrett Hicks, 1515 East Indian River Road, president of the Concerned Citizens Association, president of the Concerned, did before Business Group, LLC. I stand on behalf to speak on C9 first. C9, I want to take the opportunity also to say thank you to Dr. Burksong. Because of C9, it was from her reaching out to the faith-based organizations and other nonprofits and stuff of that nature, so to see that these buildings are being open for organizations like Four-Stream, to talk about technology, arts, and, you know, STEAM, after school programs, it's what's needed and required. I'd like to also see that extended to some community hubs throughout our community, especially over in the Berkeley Camacella communities. I want to speak to our four, five, six, and seven and eight together. Again, that's that issue that I've come down here many a day about the Community Services Board, and I must say that they're doing a much better job of getting information out to our people, so that new director they put in place, he's doing an excellent job, and I want to say thank you for that. Just, we've got to do still even more so when it comes to our children or families being hurt in our communities, and no one comes for that comfort that is needed and required. I mean, but again, I'm here to say thank you to the Community Services Board for stepping up, for sure. I will go off into R17, to where we're talking about these Juvenile Community Crime Control Act and whatnot. Again, I'm for it again, again, but I would hope that we can look to extend out to all the other programs, because again, it's what's needed and required. Our children, in juvenile jails, whether they are being held there as juveniles or as adults, we have more children in juvenile jails than anywhere in our, in our state, no matter how you want to spin it, in that sense. So I would hope that we could find programs like this, the way we're changing the dynamic to we're getting them before they get to that park. That's what we came up under. That's what I came up under in Berkeley with the additional adult voices at the recreation center, and I know the mayor did similar at the Boys and Girls Club. We need this type of legislation across our city. I, that was pretty much, and I just want to close out on, I think, your PH4, I don't know if I'm out of order in that sense, but PH4, with the fact you guys are allocating of found monies that you're going to send to Berkeley, the Berkeley Community Center, that young man over there, Mr. Aronson?
You can come back, you sign up for that one.
Yeah, but...
I'll call you back for PH4.
Oh, so that's a separate?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know.
This is consenting regular, and I'll call you back for PH4.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, no worries. Nicole Pace?
Hi, Nicole Pace, 1600 Granby, Norfolk, 23510. Am I up for R1 or R2 right now, or both?
R2.
Okay, I'm here for R1 if you have questions as well. In regards to R2, I, you've all heard from me via email, so I won't rehash the things that I've sent you, hopefully you received the email with the videos. I do want to just address my conversation with Tom and Russell today, and any confusion about any short-term rentals that may or may not have been hosted there. The 12 units that are operating are operating as 30-day-plus corporate rentals. I understand there's information that license plates have changed. I've provided Tom and Russell with the entire history of reservations there directly from the reservation system, a video of all the minimum stays. Do you understand that we host the Tunneling Company across all of Norfolk? We have almost 30 apartments with that group, the German Tunneling Company. They are constantly bringing in new crews. They all are on a corporate lease, there is no subletting, but they are allowed to change out their guys that are working, so you may or may not see different trucks there. We also don't require 1 through 12 to pick a parking spot, so maybe 10 is parking in one, you know, because we're not full, so we're not like enforcing parking passes or anything like that. We're also hosting JC Walls, which is a huge company here doing construction, and we're the biggest housing provider for the Saudi military right now, who are here at our Navy base doing educational series year-round, some for 30 days, some for 220 days, it just depends on the series that they're in. They have been staying with us as their housing provider in Norfolk since I've been running Sojourn here. So these guys also are changing out often, they're from Texas, they're from Florida, they're from Missouri. They all bring their cars, they don't fly here, they're very low-paid individuals, they can barely afford to rent rooms here, so we're really proud that we are able to come up with solutions for leasing to them. In addition, like, I know for sure that that was not an overnight stay. I wouldn't have recommended having a graduation party while we're in the middle of this, but he didn't rent the house out. Additionally, I have one more thing, I'll be very fast, which is like, there was some confusion with the Marriott guests, I walked Russell and Tom through this today, they booked a legal unit in Norfolk, they arrived to no air conditioning. Our customer service team almost moved them to 810 West Ocean View, our customer service manager made it very clear they could not be moved there, and they were immediately moved to 594 West Ocean View. We have it all timestamped for you if you need copies of those emails. In our reservation system, we can show you the access on the lock, we can show you that no one entered unit number 12 that day, so we, I don't know if that was like, I just made sure to go over all of this with them, because I want to make sure we're totally transparent with you guys. I 100% support all of our civic matters, but this owner has done all of the things that are in the letter of this legislation, and has committed to making even more improvements for the parking, and I just think that, you know, he has met those requirements, and he's hired a great company, and he's made sure the dumpster isn't showing, so...
Thank you so much.
Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Clerk, you ready for PH1?
PH1, Schedule to State pursuant to state law on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend multiple use tables in Sections 4.2.3.F and 4.3.3.E of the Norfolk zoning ordinance so as to create an accessory use of electric vehicle charging station and to allow it in certain districts by right, and to expand the zoning districts where the use of artisanal production is allowed by right, and the Planning Commission voted by 5 to 1 to recommend the approval.
Call the roll.
I have an ordinance to amend multiple use tables in Sections 4.2.3.F and 4.3.3.E of the Norfolk zoning ordinance so as to create an accessory use of electric vehicle charging station and to allow it in certain districts by right, and to expand the zoning districts where the use of artisanal production is allowed by right. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with effective date. Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas? Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, PH2?
Public hearing 2A is an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to authorize the operation of a child daycare center named Lightyear's Child Development Center on property located at 1485 Johnston's Road, and the Planning Commission voted by 6-0 to approve this application.
Call the roll.
I have an ordinance to rezone property located at 1485 Johnston's Road from IN Institutional District to Conditional MFNS Multifamily Neighborhood Scaled District. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Are the Woodberrys here? I thought it was you two. I am wishing you much success on this area for your townhomes off of Johnston Road, and if there are any questions that you need answered, Team Norfolk is here to support any questions that you may have. That's our job, that's what we do, is to help people be successful, so I vote aye.
Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Mr. Clerk, PH2.
Public hearing 2A is an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to authorize the operation of a child daycare center named Lightyear's Child Development Center on property located at 1485 Johnston's Road, and by 6-0 vote, Planning Commission has recommended approval of the application.
Call the roll.
Mr. Clanton? Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice, Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
To the Woodberrys?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
So the Woodberrys? As an educator, I, again, am wishing you much success, especially with this childcare, and that you give the children, our scholars, everything that they need to be successful in life, and thank you for wanting to continue the childcare services to the families. I vote aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
P H three?
Public hearing three, schedule this date pursuant to state law to hear comments approving a lease agreement with Verizon Virginia LLC for a parcel of land at Far Lawn, Fair Lawn Elementary School and Recreation Center in the city of Norfolk.
I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Verizon Virginia LLC for a parcel of land at Fair Lawn Elementary School Recreation Center in the city of Norfolk. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Mr. Clerk, P H four?
Public hearing four, schedule this date pursuant to state law to hear comments to amend and reordain the capital improvement budget for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty-twenty-four and ending June thirty twenty-twenty-five so as to reappropriate previously authorized but unissued bonds up to the amount of seven million two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars to add funding to the improved Berkeley Community Center and amenities, revitalize St. Paul's and Scope Area Arena projects, and to add the repair Westover Park brick wall and renovate one-eleven Granby Street project.
Yes, Mr. Barrett Hicks?
Thank you, sir. Barrett Hicks, fifteen fifteen East Indian River Road, longtime Berkeley guy, Campestella, two-three-five-two-three. To see funding after not seeing a lot during the budget, to say that you guys found the funding that was sitting out there, in that sense, to come back and appropriate some of that funding for that Berkeley Community Center is a, it's a blessing. They have a young man over there, Mr. Arrington, is really doing the stuff that changes the dynamic of these children's lives. And so if it's building projects, again, this doesn't tell us actually what we're going to use these funds for, but whatever that guy needs, whatever he's asking for, should be done, because he's really, he really has these children's best interests at heart. He's getting them out of the community, he's bringing organizations in, he's doing the things that, again, that we were brought up on, Mr. Mayor, and that's the change, that's the dynamic that's needed and required. So, so to send some funding monies over to that Berkeley community, I want to say again, Mr. Manager, thank you, thank you, Council.
Jay Boon?
Good evening. Before I start, I just had a question. I know there's two paragraphs here, so the first one, the seven-point-two, is what would be possibly like divided or figured out for the four projects, and then the second paragraph, Berkeley is not included in that funding? The six-point-seven?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council members, there's a table reference in the ordinance that identifies two new projects that are being funded. One is a, a Westover Memorial Park at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, another is to do some refurbishments of the commercial space in the one-eleven Granby Street Garage. The other two projects listed are just consolidating funds in the revitalize St. Paul's project for infrastructure and consolidating some smaller Scope Arena projects into the larger renovation projects. And the, the total of that is an increase of six-point-seven million to the CIP, but it's just the reallocation of existing funds.
Right, so Berkeley isn't included in that second pocket of funds?
Actually, I need to clarify, and I mentioned this to Councilman Page earlier, the reference to the Berkeley Community Center in the legal ad that ran a few weeks ago was actually a formatting error. There's an existing two-point-three million dollars roughly on the Berkeley Community Center that's not changing. So that was an action that Council took previously, so this, this does not add any funding specifically to Berkeley, but the two-point-three for the Berkeley project remains on that project.
Okay, so that's outside of the seven-point-two?
It is.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening, Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak today about something that means so much to so many, our Berkeley Community Center. So there are not just, this is not just a place on the map, Berkeley is vibrant, resilient community, rich with culture, history, and people who show up for each other, even when resources don't. The Berkeley Community Center stands at the heart of it all, a space that keeps our kids safe, our families supported, and our seniors engaged. It's more than a building, it's a lifeline. Every day after school, young people walk through those doors into a safe, structured environment, off the streets, and into a space where they are mentored, fed, and protected. The BCC provides them with more than recreation, it gives them an opportunity, it gives them opportunity, direction, and care. For families juggling multiple jobs or struggling to make ends meet, the center offers real support, meals, access to resources, programs that uplift, and much more. It's a place where the families can breathe, knowing that they're not alone. And for our elders, our community's wisdom keepers, the center gives the connection, dignity, and joy, whether it's dance classes, community meals, or just a place to gather and be seen. So let me be clear, I rarely, rarely use the word deserve, but they deserve this funding, and I don't think that it should just be any arbitrary number, I think if anything, it should be equally distributed between the four projects, especially since they are going to be able to have allocated funds with the six-point-seven million. And so if you look at that total divided by the four, that would be one-point-eight million, that should go to that Berkeley Community Center. Thank you.
Mr. Boon?
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain the capital improvement plan budget for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty-twenty-four and ending June thirty twenty-twenty-five so as to reappropriate previously authorized but unissued bonds up to the amount of six million seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and to add funding to revitalize St. Paul's and Scope Arena projects and add the repair Westover Park brick wall and renovate one-eleven Granby Street projects. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date, Mr. Clanton.
Mr. Mayor, my colleagues, not going to belabor this, but I just want people to know that I stand with my colleague, Councilman JP Page, and the Berkeley community to ensuring that Berkeley Community Center and so forth receive the resources that they desperately need and have not received in past years. I'm going to vote in aye in favor of this capital improvement, but we definitely will work as we continue to go through the planning process, but I just wanted that to be publicly known.
Thank you. Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
Prove the consent agenda and dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date with the exception of C six, which we'll vote on separately since the hours are being amended. Prove the consent agenda, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Mr. Clerk, C six?
C six is an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to authorize the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption at a restaurant named My Mama's Kitchen on property located eighteen-seventy-two East Little Creek Road, and what we're doing is we're adopting this by amending the hours of operation.
And the amended hours for the sale of alcohol match the hours that you're permitting the business to be open?
Mr. Clerk, call the row.
Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, R one?
R one is an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit vacation rental on property located at sixteen-nineteen Lafayette Boulevard. And this item was continued from our June tenth meeting, and the Planning Commission voted six-zero recommending approval.
Call the row.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, R two?
R two is an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to authorize short-term rental units vacation rental on property located at eight-ten West Ocean View Avenue, units A and B, and this item was continued from our June tenth meeting, and by five-one vote, Planning Commission recommended approval of the application. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date, Mr. Clanton.
Nay.
Mrs. Doyle.
Nay.
Mrs. Johnson.
Nay.
Mr. McGee.
Nay.
Mr. Page.
No.
Mr. Smigel.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, short-term rentals are not evil, and as you heard from Nicole Pace with sojourn, the services that are being, short-term rentals are offering for particularly businesses that are doing business in the city of Norfolk, they have no other place to stay, Mr. Mayor. And, and so, you know, I was troubled the other day when I received a phone call from a council member about the things that you've dispelled that were happening over there with the party and people staying, and so I appreciate you coming down and really sharing that with us. I'm the one who asked for this to be delayed so that you'd go back before the Willoughby Civic League, because there was some miscommunication and misinformation that were shared, and I wanted to give you guys a fair chance, you know, on that. The Civic League still voted against it, and Willoughby doesn't want you to have a short-term rental operation, so it's not going to pass, but I just thank you for trying to invest, but they don't want, want it there, so nay.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Dr. Alexander?
No.
R three?
R three is an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit vacation rental on property located one-thousand-one-thirty-fifth Street, one-thousand-three-thirty-fifth Street, and by five-one vote, Planning Commission recommended approval of this application. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas. Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
R four?
R four is an ordinance amending the FY twenty-twenty-five Annual Appropriations Ordinance number forty-nine-five-nine-zero so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of eleven-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to support one of the Norfolk Community Services Board's developmental disability DT individuals to remain in their current DD waiver Medicaid private provider, the purpose if and when received, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY twenty-twenty-five budget to add the grant information for the purpose. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Mr. Thomas. Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
R five?
R five is an ordinance amending the FY twenty-twenty-five Annual Appropriations Ordinance number forty-nine-five-nine, so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ten dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to support one of the Norfolk Community Center Board's developmental disability DT individuals to remain with their current DD waiver Medicaid private provider, the purpose if and when received, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY twenty-twenty-five budget to add the grant information for the purpose. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
R six?
R six is an ordinance amending the FY twenty-twenty-five Annual Appropriations Ordinance number forty-nine-five-nine, so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-nineteen dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services through the CSB Health Planning Region Five for the Norfolk Community Services Board to support employee pay differential, sign-on and/or retention bonuses, and other workforce initiatives as determined by the NCSB, the project if and when received, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY twenty-twenty-five budget to add the grant information for the project. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
R seven is an ordinance amending the FY twenty-twenty-five Annual Appropriations Ordinance number forty-nine-five-nine, so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of eighty-eight-thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services for FY twenty-five O B R A reallocation funds for the Norfolk Community Services Board to supplement programs and services that assist individuals with developmental disabilities if and when received, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY twenty-twenty-five budget to add the grant information. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date, Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
R eight?
R eight is an ordinance amending the FY twenty-twenty-five Annual Appropriations Ordinance number forty-nine-five-nine, so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up 49590 so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of $13,200 from the Norfolk Community Trust to support the Norfolk Community Services Board's food pantry that provides direct benefit to NSCB clients, NCSB clients, excuse me, the project if and when received, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY 2025 budget to add the grant information for the project. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Ms. Clerk, PH four.
R nine is an ordinance to amend and reordain Section 29-2 of the Norfolk City Code 1979 regarding the causing or encouraging of minors to commit misdemeanors, et cetera, so as to conform to updated state law. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. R ten.
R ten is an ordinance to amend and reordain subsection E of Section 24-203 of the Norfolk City Code 1979 so as to provide that the tax abatement runs with the land. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. R twelve.
R eleven, sir.
R eleven.
R eleven is an ordinance adopting the City of Norfolk Safety Action Plan in compliance with the requirements of the United States Department of Transportation's Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Grant Program. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. R twelve.
R twelve is an ordinance amending the FY 2025 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 49590 so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of $40,401 from the Tideward Emergency Medical Services Council for the Department of Fire and Rescue to offset the fiscal impact of the medication kit transition, if and when received, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY 2025 budget to add the grant information. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Stay.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Councilman Doyle woke me up there. That's very enthusiastic, Mr. Smigel. Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
R thirteen.
R thirteen is an ordinance amending the FY 2025 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 49590 so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of $12,500 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services through the CSB Health Planning Region Five for the Norfolk Community Services Board to support reimbursement, clinical supervision towards LE licensure with the Board of Health Professions, and to free costs associated with increasing the level of clinical expertise if and when received, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY 2025 budget, and to add to the grant information. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. R fourteen.
R fourteen is an ordinance amending the FY 2025 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 49590 so as to specifically appropriate previously appropriated opioid settlement funds up to the sum of $100,000 for the Norfolk Sheriff's Office opioid abatement projects if and when received, and amending the FY 2025 budget to add the same. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. R fifteen.
R fifteen is an ordinance amending the FY 2025 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 49590 so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of $40,000 from Petco Love to supplement funds provided in the city's FY 2025 capital improvement plan for kennel remodeling at the Norfolk Animal Care Center Shelter, the project if and when received, and amending annual grants plan in the FY 2025 budget to add the grant information for the project. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. R sixteen.
R sixteen is an ordinance amending the FY 2025 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 49590 so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of $43,694 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services Award Number NOA 3217.773 for the Norfolk Community Services Board for the flexible funding program if and when received, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY 2025 budget to add the grant information. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. R seventeen.
R seventeen is an ordinance amending the FY 2025 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 49590 so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of $35,700 from the Virginia Department of Human Services for the city's Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act program if and when received, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY 2025 budget to add the grant information. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Ms. Clerk, PH two.
R nineteen. R nineteen is an ordinance amending the FY 2025 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 49590 so as to accept and appropriate grant funds up to the sum of $35,700 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services through the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant DCJS, Grant Number 548093, for the Norfolk Sheriff's Office to acquire an equipment decam- decam- decan- dec- decamination unit, specialty housing access control systems and correctional activity equipment if and when received, appropriating the sum of $11,900 as a local cash match, and amending the annual grants plan in the FY 2025 budget to add the grant information. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Should we ask him to read it again?
Decamination.
Aye.
It's really hot up here.
It is hot up here.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye.
And R nineteen is an ordinance approving and adopting the fiscal year 2026 compensation plan for officers and employees of the city, and approving criteria and procedures for pay supplements for certain constitutional and Commonwealth officers and employees, and amending the City Norfolk City Code 1979 as amended so as to revise Section 2.1-1.3 concerning city positions exempt from the classified service. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
Aye. Ms. Clerk, you have another?
That's all I have tonight.